Meeting, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Member Reed?
Absent.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda for the policy subcommittee, we have two proposed policies. The first is IKF, which would be proposed graduation requirement changes. And then the second is a proposed new policy, which would be IKFE. And it would be competency determination, which is a sort of a new term in education. It's coming down from the state. And Attorney Gallo is here. Welcome back Attorney Gallo. Love having you.
Thank you.
And he's gonna kinda walk us through these as per usual, I guess.
So, good evening. Thank you once again. And for the record, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer Charlie Gallo. Good evening Chairperson Dugan, Subcommittee Member Satterwhite, members of the committee as a whole, including the Vice Chair, Mayor, members of the administration, and Superintendent. I'm here tonight just as I was in January 2025. And really, this is the continued aftermath of MCAS as a graduation requirement, following the ballot question that did away with that last November. Before I go too far with that, I just want to acknowledge that a lot of individuals helped with what you have before you tonight. A lot of departments helped with what you have before you tonight. The Superintendent and deputies, especially Deputy Cohen, as this is really a secondary matter. MLE, Special Education Innovation, school counselors from across the district, including the district-level Guidance Counselor, the Chief Academic Officer, and from her team, data and curriculum members. So I just wanna make that acknowledgement to start. Post-MCAS as a graduation requirement, cities and towns need to determine competency as a diploma requirement. And competency is something different than just what is a graduation requirement in terms of coursework. And so what DESI says is that to determine competency, districts have to certify that their students have demonstrated mastery in the areas measured formally by MCAS. So that is the task, not just with Lynn, but for all districts. DESI began in July telling everyone, telling districts, that you need to separate these out as two separate policies. And so as a result, you have before you two policies. One is a revised graduation requirement. The other is a new competency determination policy. The new policies have to be effective for the current graduating class. What I want you to know is that there are no major changes for the current graduating class, but it still affects seniors. And so we're trying to move as fast as we can to give proper notice and to begin, you know, implementing these. Originally, the DESI deadline for adopting these new policies was October 31st. In the guidance that you have, it says October 31st. DESI subsequently pushed that to December 31st. But our team here has been working under the October 31st deadline since late July because we want to provide as much notice as possible to current seniors and their families. We want to be sure that you have enough time to submit feedback. So if this doesn't pass tonight, hopefully can come back at the next meeting with your feedback and pass it. We want to be sure we have as much time as possible to share with staff. And in addition to that, DESI is requiring every city and town to submit their policy to them for review. And so we're hoping to be able to do that as soon as possible, although I will just give you a caveat that that portal's not open yet. And that's, of course, out of our control. I'm just trying to best position us as possible to do this as quickly as possible. Just a little bit more background, in terms of, you know, statewide changes, the November 2024 ballot question happened, and then DESI was largely hands-off. Said cities and towns, you determine your competency in the way you want to. The governor then, in January, sort of picked up the ball and put together this graduation council that is chaired by Secretary Tuttweiler. At the same time as that happened, DESI sort of had a change of heart. And there were regulations and guidances that issued in summer. And so that's what we're working with today, and we have to work with today. But I'll probably be back again. And so Chairperson Dugan, not to disappoint, I'll likely be back again on this.
Never disappoint.
Thank you.
We love having you.
This particular thing, because I do expect that the governor's group may report back as soon as late fall, early winter. That's timeline and background. Before I get into substance, any questions or just wanna make sure folks are okay with that background?
Any questions on the committee?
We're doing okay.
Doing great, yeah.
Okay. So in your packet, you have four items. They are the DESI Mass Core Framework from 2018. That is the current framework still from 2018. And those are the strongly recommended subject areas for graduation. You then have the July 2025 DESI Competency Determination Guidance. That is a 14-pager. You have a Proposed Revised Policy IKF, which is graduation requirements. And you have a new policy IKFE proposed, which is competency determination, called CD nowadays. So I'm gonna start with IKF per the agenda. You'll remember that in 2024, LPS aligned its graduation requirements for the first time to Mass Core. That was Deputy Cohen and I at that time. We co-presented that in February of 2024. And so post-MCAS, during that initial DESI hands-off period, we amended that then in January 2025 to add CD requirements of our own. Those CD requirements were all of the Mass Core that Deputy Cohen and I presented, plus receiving a passing grade in Grade 10 ELA, Grade 10 Math, and a Grade 10 Science. Basically, that is the same requirement for graduation and CD for class of 2025. That's what all districts were really doing at that time. But DESI is now clear. Districts need to do two separate things. In addition to graduation, they need to separate out their CD policy. So the proposed revisions to IKF in front of you, remove the CD provisions that we added in January 2025, keep intact the February 2024 Mass Core requirements that Deputy Cohen and I presented, have some stylistic changes for ease of use by families and staff alike, providing more info, what classes can be taken at the middle school level but count for high school, what classes can be taken semester-long versus, you know, full-year classes. But very, and a few substantive changes, they're minor, but some of them will impact current students, and so I wanna mention them. The first is that history and social science, three years, is not a new requirement. But what is new per DESI is that starting for class of 2027, US history and world history need to be two of those three years. For class of 2027, three years of lab-based science, technology, or engineering also not new, but that two of those three years are going to be biology and chemistry. And that was an LPS team rigor decision and recommendation for you. And then finally, and this is feedback from what we did in 2024, which I think was a good policy and well-received, other than we did not grandfather the one year of the arts. And we got some feedback on that. And so now we're going to recommend a grandfathering of that. That really is IKF in front of you. I'm happy to take any questions on that or wait till the end, or, you know, take them all together, whatever you would like. I would just note for sort of vote purposes, if there are votes to be taken, these would be two separate votes, two separate policies. So I'm happy to pause for questions about graduation requirements prior to CD, or if we're so far so good, keep going.
Yeah, why don't we pause for questions? This is a big one, graduation requirements, so. Any questions from the committee?
Hi.
Yeah, Member Satterwhite.
I just have a couple of questions in regards to the course requirements.
Sure.
Um, so for a student that's graduating in June 2027,
Yes.
what is, what specific science courses must be completed to meet the bio-based science, technology, and engineering?
Correct. So it's three years of lab-based science, technology, engineering, which is not, not new. The state guidance that came out this year that says that for a class of 2027, you have to include bio or chemistry within those three years. So you could do bio in two years of something else, or chemistry in two years of something else. But as a practical matter here, the decision was made and the recommendation was made that two of the three years should be bio and chem, which really is codification of what happens anyway. And I'm glad, Member Satterwhite, that you asked the question also, because there is applied chemistry for certain students who are on IEPs. And there's an exception in the language for those students, so that they don't have to be, you know, adhere to the same chemistry standard.
Got it. That brings me to my next question, was actually about exceptions. Under what circumstances can the LVTI student be exempt from world language or arts grad requirements? And then who has authority to approve these?
Absolutely. So under world language, there's various exceptions. Students at tech and CTE programs are able to become exempt. There's also language that allows the superintendent or designee to exempt other students in other ways. And things we've talked about have been potentially the stamp assessment test or the seal of biliteracy. As we know, in the Lynn Public Schools, we have a great diversity in terms of, you know, language. And so students who maybe already are bilingual, you know, fluently, perhaps this will free them up to take another course.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. See no further questions, I guess. Yeah, we can move on to IKFE.
Yes. IKFE is the competency determination policy. So just for folks who are listening or watching, the coding is set by a national organization. And then there's the state organization, Mass Association of School Committees at the state level that sort of applies those to Massachusetts. So IKFE is a Mass, Mass Association of School Committee code, and it's also based on a Mass model policy. If you could turn to page three of the 14-page DESI guidance, you will see DESI defining what CD is. And it's a demonstrated mastery of a common core of skills, competencies, and knowledge. And then they talk about satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the student's district as showing a mastery of skills, competency, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks in the areas measured by MCAS, so on and so forth in 2023. So to break that down in just a few words, it's demonstrated mastery in the areas that were measured by MCAS. That's what CD is. If you fast forward then a little bit to page five of the 14-page DESI guidance, it provides a playbook of how districts should do this. And it says, "To show mastery, a student must successfully complete, (1) a final assessment, (2) a capstone, (3) an equivalent measure identified in policy." And towards the bottom of page five in the guidance, excuse me, you see that the state says if you passed MCAS, you can retain that benefit. So taking that guidance into play, we have a proposed new policy IKFE. So I'll go to that now. And we have number one through four for CD requirements. That is, you previously passed MCAS, or you did a final assessment, or you did a capstone project, or a DESI, or an equivalent measure, which we're calling universal pathways. And you see the number of universal pathways listed, plus the ability of the superintendent to designate others. And what we wanna do is be as equitable as possible with as many pathways as possible that may exist. So it might be that you completed your graduation requirements, previously completed MCAS, you're all set for CD purposes. It might be that you didn't previously complete MCAS, so you're going to do a final assessment, or capstone, or any one of these universal pathways, as we call it. There's also an appeal process for students within this, and there's special consideration for Ls and for students on an IEP. So that's the new IKFE that is proposed and follows along with the state guidance and the Mass model and represents a lot of work by a lot of teams here, but want, since summertime, but happy to take questions. And thank you for your consideration of it.
Okay. Questions? Member Pena?
There are exceptions for Ls and students for IEPs?
Exactly right. So the exceptions for students with disabilities and for Ls are case by case. It is essentially going to be a team decision on what those exceptions should be, not so much spelled out in policy. But those exist in addition to exceptions for late-enrolling students. So that's another area, students who may become in 10th grade, 11th grade, whatever, that there could be a review of their, you know, transcript portfolio. And in addition to that, the guidance allows, and I'm glad you asked this, because we have put in our draft here, that we would use MCAS potentially in those limited exceptions. Let's say a student came at 17 or something. Correct.
Another country, yeah.
Correct.
Any other questions from the committee? Okay. Well, Attorney Gallo, thank you, and thank you to your team. I mean, this represents obviously a tremendous amount of work. And I think our students are gonna really benefit from this. So thank you very much for everything you did and everything you will continue to do with this. Appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Can we make a motion to move it to the full committee?
Second. Roll call, please.
Two separate?
We will need two separate, right? So if you do the first one, yeah.
So a motion to the proposed revision of the policy IKF graduation requirements to the full committee?
Second. Roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes. And then, second motion to move forward the competency determination?
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay. Now I can officially thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Attorney Gallo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
All right. And see no further business?
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to bring the curriculum subcommittee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
We have a presentation on financial literacy with Brotherhood Credit Union.
Good evening. Thank you to the members of the school committee for your time and for the ongoing support that you always provide to Connery Elementary. So this evening, I am joined by Michelle Brown, one of our program specialists. And tonight, we are seeking your approval to implement the FDIC's Money Smart Financial Literacy Curriculum in partnership with Brotherhood Credit Union. This partnership represents the next step in Connery's financial literacy initiative, a project that began at the classroom level and has grown into something truly powerful for our students and community. This year, our journey began with a simple but powerful idea rooted in a Jamaican proverb, "Every mickle meck-a-muckle." It means every little bit adds up to something greater. That phrase has become the heart of our financial literacy project, teaching students that even small acts of savings and planning can grow into something meaningful. So we kicked things off with a school-wide read-aloud where every teacher led a discussion about the importance of saving. From there, we introduced Banking Fridays, where students bring in coins each week to deposit in their class piggy banks. Like this one. And each time they drop money into it, the little tail goes up. Students bring in the coins each week. And so it's been exciting to see classes name their pigs, track savings, and cheer each other on. This project has been about building habits and character. Students in grades K to 4 are saving toward a class gift for our graduating fifth graders, while our fifth graders will use their funds to leave a legacy gift to the school when they move on to middle school. This idea sparked something bigger, a desire to give our students a structured foundation in financial literacy, one that ties directly to our school improvement plan and to the district's initiative around real-world readiness and equity.
Good evening, and thank you so much. Everything that Kenry just mentioned, that's what led us to form partnership with the Brotherhood Credit Union, who will help us bring a formal financial literacy curriculum to Connery using the FDIC's Money Smart program. This program includes four 30-minute modules, each taught by credit union staff, while teachers support students. The modules are understanding money, recognizing needs and wants, and the value of saving, budgeting and planning, learning how to set financial goals and make a plan to reach them. Banking basics, understanding deposits, withdrawals, and interest. Real-world applications applying lessons to saving for goals given entrepreneurship. This means students will have four total class visits from our community partners. Each lesson, hands-on, age-appropriate, and directly connected to Massachusetts math standards around decimals, fractions, and data representation. In addition, we'll launch a guest-readers series where bank team members visit classrooms to read books about saving and money management. And we warmly invite the school committee members to join us. One of these sessions as we have our guest readers. We have also built a family engagement and technology component. Students will complete an AI-inspired culminating project, choosing from options like creating a digital saving tracker, an AI storybook about money goals, a chatbot called Money Mentor, or an infographic and saving tips. They'll share these projects at a financial literacy family showcase. To ensure this is meaningful but manageable, these lessons will be woven directly into existing math instruction and extended during fifth-grade wind blocks. This way, the project supports what students are already learning, strengthening math concepts through real-world application without taking time away from core instruction.
So this year's work will begin with our fifth-grade pilot. And our goal is to expand to all grades in future years, so every Connery student builds these essential skills from an early age. We'll measure its success with a mix of qualitative and quantitative data, including a pre- and post-student reflection on savings and money concepts, class savings data from Banking Fridays, teacher feedback on math integration and engagement, and family participation in the culminating project. So finally, we'd love to invite, to be invited back at the end of the year so that our fifth graders can present their projects directly to you and share what they've learned. With your approval, we can continue turning classrooms into spaces where students learn how to count money, but also how to make it count for themselves, their families, and their future. We thank you for your time and continued partnership.
Does anyone have any questions? Member Gaetley?
I think it's awesome. And I can see you pulling it off, Kenry, very well. And I would love to come to Connery and visit you.
Member Pena?
I just wanna say that this is a, I love the concept, I love the idea, you know, and flying real-world. Understanding, I'd love to come back. I mean, I'd love to see you come back, but I would also love to go to Connery and see the kids.
Member Castellanos?
For me, it's, financial literacy is so important. It's critical. I think the way you guys are capturing it through qualitative and quantitative, your measurements are, I look forward to hearing the feedback and what they learn. I think the concept is long overdue. I think I look forward to seeing it district-wide one day. The three Cs, capital, credit, and capacity, you know, homeownership, wealth management, wealth development, generational wealth. In a city, in all gateway cities, you know, it's a very important skill to have and to learn what money is and resources and, you know, how it works. Because I think at the end of the day, it's important, right? It's like, like you said, it's live world, it's live application to your life, financial management. I think it's a great initiative. I'm very proud to support it. I can look forward to seeing the success of this program. And I would love to support and be present too for any opportunities that we, that you guys have over there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One question was, why the brother, why the institution? How did you guys, what was that vetting process? Because when I'm thinking about Metro and all the other banks, like why them?
So as a family in Lynn, we have an established relationship with Brotherhood Credit Union. My children opened their first banking account there. They also have an established relationship with Connery. They were a part of our back-to-school kickoff event. They hosted a table, provided information, and, you know, piggy banks for the community. So they're really excited about this program. They're doing it out of the kindness of their heart and also understanding the importance of financial literacy. I, to put a personal spin in it, engaged in financial literacy at the age of six, and that concept has never left me. And it actually shapes how I manage my life and money today.
What was the curriculum called again? Smart?
Money Smart.
Money Smart?
In at Connery, it's called "Every mickle meck-a-muckle."
Say it one more time.
Just like that.
Member Satterwhite?
I as well just wanted to commend you. I'm very excited about this. I wish it could be implemented in all the elementaries. Usually see it in high school, but starting young, I think this is amazing. So I definitely empower you with this. And then also, I just wanted to thank Principal Valdez and Deputy Fritz for getting back to me so promptly with my questions on this curriculum. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Member Dugan?
No, that's right. Awesome. Really excited this is happening. Looking forward to the projects in the spring. That would be something that, you know, really exciting to see. And again, I'd love to get into Connery as well. Just a quick kind of clarifying question. This is gonna be taught by the teachers, or is people from Brotherhood coming in? Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Awesome. This is great. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions? Oh, Member Gaetley?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept this program.
Second.
Move it to the full committee.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we're gonna open the open-mic session. The open-mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern of the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District. And having discussed their views with a student government representative, the chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of the order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The first name is crossed out, which I assume that person did themselves, unless I'm misreading that? No? Okay. The first name is Christina Gomez, if you wanna say your name and...
I don't know if she crossed it out herself.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll give Christina a minute to think about that, because the next name is Norma Mendez. We can always go back. If you just say your name and address.
Hi, everyone. So I'll be interpreting for Norma.
Thank you for interpreting.
My name is Norma. Good evening. I wanna give my gratefulness for being here tonight. And to be in a space, in a new space for the community. It's amazing to see a space more safe. Modern and new for our students. And also the significant, I would also like to give the significance for our Hispanic community. Having a superintendent that speaks our language and gives, is of Spanish heritage. And understands our dreams and wishes. And her leadership within the community give... And the work in between. The families. The teachers and administration. Can transform positively. The education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There's just a mark on the sheet, so I, I'm, it looks like someone maybe crossed it out, but if that's not the case, it's now open for anybody to come up, um, so, yep. Just state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Denisa Lopez and I live at two seventy Chatham Street. I'm here tonight to share how excited I am to have made the transition to Lynn Public Schools. I have been an educator for twenty years and have held various positions, such as a first-grade teacher, high school special education teacher, reading specialist, and district coach. What attracted me most to Lynn Public Schools was their commitment to students with learning differences, more specifically, students with dyslexia. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, and the district has taken many steps to ensure that our students receive the proper instructions needed to strive, to strive. Some examples include the opening of new high schools. Having smaller schools supports teachers providing more individualized instruction. The investment in early education is also very powerful, ensuring that our youngest learners receive the stimulation needed for optimal brain development. And finally, the addition of programs such as Letterland will help many students. These positive changes can only be completed by a dedicated team. The city of Lynn is very lucky to have so many community partners who are invested in seeing LPS students thrive. Thank you so much for the mayor, the school committee, and Dr. Alvarez for being role models to our students. Dr. Alvarez's ability to connect with LPS students and families has made a huge impact on student success. In closing, if anyone else would like more information about dyslexia, I recommend the website Bright Solutions for Dyslexia. Thank you so mu- so much for your time and the commitment to our students.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for open-mic? Anyone for open-mic? I will say, if there's someone that wants to communicate to the school committee, please reach out to, to us, any one of us individually, or the administration, Mary Jewels, the secretary of the school committee, and can pass the information on to, to each of us. Daniel Smith is in the audience here, representing my office, and you can, and you can grab him or, or reach out to us directly at, at any point. So we encourage people to, to reach out. Last call for open-mic, anyone else for open-mic? All right, we will close open-mic portion of the evening and move into the fifteenth regular meeting of the school committee, roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. And we are also joined again by Lynn Classical High School Student Representative Amelia Stank. And I have a note here. She is the two thousand twenty-five recipient of the Harvard Club of Boston Prize Book Award. This award is presented to at our spring's awards ceremony. And Amelia was recently recognized at the annual prize breakfast held at the Harvard Club of Boston. This honor celebrates Amelia's outstanding academic achievement, leadership, and commitment to our community. Congratulations. Congratulations, all right. For those who are able, please join me in a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Please remain standing if you're able for a moment of silence in memory of Mary Claire Mahoney, retired teacher, passed away October first, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you. Signing Mr. Metz?
Motion to accept, the current subcommittee on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Do them all together. And a motion to accept the policy subcommittee on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. And a motion to accept the fourteenth regular meeting on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. Member Dugan, any votes taken in the policy subcommittee?
Yes, so we had two policies that were put forth. The first is IKF, and it is an updated graduated requirement, so we would need a vote on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, and then the next one is a new policy being put forth, IKFE Competency Determination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadowite, any votes taken in curriculum subcommittee meeting?
Yes, so we had a new curriculum for Connery School for Financial Literacy with Brotherhood Credit Union.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next, we have accountability data.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It won't reach, it's okay, it's perfect. I've presented under worse conditions. I'll be fine, thank you.
To members of the school committee, Dr. Alvarez, Mayor Nicholson, and our family and community that is here today, I am here to present our accountability data for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. So the purpose of this presentation is really to understand the district's performance on DESI's accountability framework and how we measure against those goals as well. And also to provide a comprehensive review of the state assessment data, which is MCAS, although it is no longer a CD requirement, it still does count in our accountability. And so really distinguishing that, as we talk about MCAS tonight, although it's not a CD requirement, it still counts in our accountability framework. I've always shared this slide since my first presentation here. And I'm going to always bring us back here as we think about data as a roadmap, not just for the purpose of analysis paralysis. I'm not going to go through everything, but thinking about using the data to drive decisions, how we bring equity and excellence to the district, but also use it as a way to reflect and think about the action that we're actually going to take. At one point, I gave a full scope of understanding and conversation about what the accountability framework is. I'm going to keep it high level tonight. But these are the various components of the accountability framework. Just quickly, achievement is what you often hear referred to as what percentage of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations, but also whether it's partially meeting or not meeting. And then growth is how much of our students growing from year to year. When the kid move from third to fourth grade, how much did they grow? But also understanding that growth only counts for ELA, math. And science does not have growth because it's only administered in the fifth, eighth, and tenth grade. So you won't see that as an indicator. And then also, high school completion includes three indicators. Our four-year graduation rate, which is oftentimes lagging in the data, so you won't necessarily see points there because although our students graduate in June, there are some students who graduate over the summer. And so that data is still being calculated by DESI, and that's what we call one of those lagging indicators, where the data has not come in yet. And so what they normally do is plug it with the most recent year's data. The previous year's data, I'm sorry. Also, our extended engagement rate and our annual dropout, dropout rate. And then our progress towards English language proficiency, which is our WEATA access. How did our English laner, English learners perform on the WEATA access assessment? And then we also have some additional indicators like chronic absenteeism and our advanced coursework. So here's some additional points of how the data is divided up and what, how you'll see me talk about the data as well. We have two categories, so the non-high schools is really K through eight. And so when we speak that language of non-high school versus high school, and think about our accountability percentile, where it's relative to how we perform against other school districts and schools in the state. And so of only K eight schools are compared to K eight schools in the state, and only high schools are compared to other high schools across the state. And then you'll see a all-students group and a lowest-performing student group as well. So these are our twenty twenty-five points. The two circles on the top, to the left represents our non-high school, and to the right represents our high school. It goes in the order that I showed you or explained, starting with achievement, where we received three out of twelve points for all students in K eight, and zero points out of twelve for all students in achievement at the high school level. When you move down to the green, you'll see the growth that we are making progress and continuously growing our students as well. And then when you look at the high school completion, again, that calculation is not finalized, but currently we have four out of twelve. And of course, naturally, you won't see it on the left because on the left is K through eight. Our progress towards English proficiency. For K eight, we received three out of four points. And for high school, we received four out of four points. And in our additional indicators, chronic absenteeism, we received one out of four points at the la K eight, and two out of four, four points at the high school level. And for our advanced coursework, we received four out of four points. And you'll also notice as well that they carry different weightings, I'm not going to go through all of the weightings. But at the bottom, our overall is impacted by different weightings as well. So last year was a single-year calculation. And this year, you'll see that there is a weighting of forty percent on twenty twenty, the previous school year, and then a sixty percent weighting on this school year. And then they'll roll in when we come into the twenty-five, twenty-six, that will roll into a multi-year number, which those two years that we currently have show that we're making progress at forty-two percent. And so it's a lot to digest, but overall, we are making progress towards our targets. This is a slide here where it does the calculations with the progress towards targets. So you can see that our overall cumulative number is actually forty-eight percent. And just want to note that the next category up for progress towards targets, it starts at the fifty percent. And so right now, we're making moderate progress, but we're only two points away from the next category up, which is substantial progress. There are definitely opportunities for improvement as we look at our overall achievement and continued growth. But we definitely demonstrated improvement in our high school growth, English language proficiency, and our advanced coursework, which we're going to look at our goals after we look at MCAS, and you'll be able to see those numbers more clearly specifically. But this is again, the accountability framework that DESI uses, and it also takes into consideration how we perform against other districts across the Commonwealth. So another component of the accountability framework is whether we have schools requiring assistance or schools that are in the lowest ten percentile, again, in comparison to the rest of the state. And so if you look at over the past three years from twenty-two, twenty-three, our schools requiring assistance, you can be a school requiring assistance for multiple reasons, including that your school is in the lowest ten percent, or, and/or, that there's a difference between student groups. And so if the students with disabilities at a specific school are performing significantly below their peers, then you might be identified as a school requiring assistance, but may not be in the bottom ten percent. So if you look at our schools requiring assistance, over the past couple of years, we've gone from thirteen, eleven, to ten, which is a three-point reduction. You do want the negative number there. The fewer schools that you have requiring assistance means the better that we're doing as a district. And you can see those schools listed there. Again, looking at the trends over the past three years, it's the schools in the lowest ten percent across the state. We run from eleven to ten to eight. Again, a drop in the number of schools that are in the bottom ten percent. That is what you want to see, is fewer schools in the bottom ten percent. And so I just want to pause there to acknowledge, like, the work that has happened with some of our school leaders. Like, can we, our leadership team, under Dr. Alvarez's leadership, of how we've moved the needle? And although there are some numbers, individual numbers, when you think about the accountability framework, that we are moving in the right direction as a district. At a quick glance, if you notice, the green is a positive, of course. And the green shows you how each school changed in its ranking from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. You see a lot of green there. And so if you count up all the green blocks on this slide and the next slide, you'll see that seventeen out of our twenty-four schools, and I'm saying twenty-four because twenty-four only count for accountability. So you have to meet certain criteria to account for accountability. Out of our twenty-four schools, seventeen improved in their ranking. And those are the schools listed at the bottom that do not receive accountability for various reasons. Specto, FDCA, actually, this is FDCA's first year receiving accountability data. Fallon and Virginia Bart. And moving out of the accountability framework into MCAS, which is part of the accountability. Because remember, you have the multiple factors, attendance, advanced coursework, so we're only going to look at MCAS for right now. So our MCAS overall ELA. In the top left, you will see that nineteen percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, and that's where we were talking about that achievement. And you'll see some additional numbers like the average skills score, whereas a five hundred is meeting expectations, and what the average growth was is a forty-nine point three. On the bottom left, you'll see over time, our five-year trend. While you might not be able to see the numbers, it starts with twenty twenty-one and goes through our most current year. The blue line or green is our overall for a district over the past couple of years. And then on the right, far right on the bottom, you see it by grade level. And then at the top, it talks through the item analysis and different categories for ELA. Now I'm going to break it out by grade level. So when you look at our MCAS ELA elementary data, seventeen percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations. Again, if you look at the bottom left, you do see that there is a slight uptick from twenty-four to twenty-five, there was some improvement there. And again, you'll see the same information over here on the right as well. The bars in the middle just show us the various levels that I spoke to, who's the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. In the blue, the students in gray are the students that are partially meeting expectations, and the students in red, the bars in red represent the percent of students who are not meeting expectations. This is MCAS ELA secondary, where nineteen percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations. And again, that's represented in the blue and middle, you can see that over the years. And you can kind of see it's slightly plateaued, which there wasn't much change, but there was not regression. And again, the information on the right shows by domain that's measured in ELA, and at the bottom, by grade level. Shifting into MCAS. Shifting into MCAS math overall score, and again, I'll break it out by grade level as well. You'll see our overall meeting or exceeding expectations is fifteen percent. In blue, in blue, you'll see that it's plateaued as well. And again, the same information on the right, the various domains that are measured in math and additionally the grade levels, the performance by grade level on the far right. For math elementary, again, you'll see a slight improvement over the past three years. And currently seventeen percent of our elementary students are meeting or exceeding expectations. You do see slightly higher growth in math than we have seen in our other areas for elementary. And again, the line chart and the bar chart on the bottom represent our trends over time. Math secondary, where thirteen percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations. And again, the blue line on the bottom left and the line graph shows our performance over time. The top right shows the performance by different categories in math and again, the grade levels on the bottom right. Overall, science, and again emphasizing that you won't see growth, you see the dotted line because there is no growth in science since it's only administered in fifth, eighth and tenth grade. Nineteen percent of our students are meeting expectations. And again, you can see the line in the bar graph that represents our performance over the past five years. And over on the bottom right, you see by grade level, fifth, eighth and tenth grade in science as well. So when you break it out, science elementary has slightly higher percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations with twenty-three percent of our elementary students. That's fifth grade, meeting expectations. When we look at secondary, that includes eighth and tenth grade. Seventeen percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations on the MCAS for science. So we looked at a lot of data. I didn't go into the details of the data. But last year I did provide you all with access to the dashboard that is available for you with your login with your Lynn Public Schools email address. If you'd like to look more into the data, you are more than welcome to. But just taking away our high-level takeaways, again, reducing the number of schools requiring assistance from eleven to ten. The ELA proficiency improved by two percent for grades three through five. ELA proficiency improved by three percent for six through eight. And the growth for ELA also improved from forty-seven to forty-nine. And the math growth also went from forty-five to forty-eight. There's always room for acceleration, always opportunities to grow. And so we saw no change in grades three through eight for math. The math overall proficiency, which is the meeting and exceeding expectations, were decreased by two percent. And also the ELA MCAS proficiency declined by four percent for grade ten. And there are some differences in student groups. You can see the differences in some of our student groups as well and how they performed at MCAS as well. So that wraps up accountability framework and the MCAS scores for the 24, 25 school year. We're going to shift into the district goals, which you'll see some color coding. Red means decline, which this year we did not have any declines based on our goals. Blue indicates we improved, but we did not meet that target. That was six of our goals. And then green indicates we met that target. There were four goals where we met the target. I'm not going to read these individually, but I will call out, let's focus on the positive, the ones in blue. Overall, or green, blue and green, looking at our WEATA access. We went from thirty-two percent to, we set a goal of thirty-four point four percent. And these goals are based on our trend data. How do we do over time? So there's some kind of statistical analysis behind the projections for the goals. But this was a goal that we well exceeded as a district and went from thirty-two percent to forty-one percent. And you might see some slight variations because we looked at preliminary data versus our final data that was just released last week as well. Goal two, IEP compliance. We met that goal as well. And looking at the overall belonging, while we didn't meet the goal, we did improve. And also improved our chronic absenteeism. Again, we didn't meet the goal, but we did improve chronic absenteeism. And blue, we improved our MCAS SGP and ELA, although we did not meet it. And the same for three through eight and for grade ten. For our growth in MCAS math, we actually met that goal, showed improvement in tenth grade, but we did not meet our goal. In advanced coursework, we met our goal. We set a goal to increase it by two percent, but it did increase actually, I'm not sure if this is the most up-to-date data, but we increased it by the double digits. I do want to call out that we did not have any red. I remember doing this last year. We had some numbers in red where we had some declines. And so in thinking about big picture, we improved a lot and met some of our goals. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation and to all the work to put it together and also all the work that the district does overall and again, our students prepared. That shows up in these scores. So thank you for that. Next, we have the CTE expansion program grant proposal.
Good evening. Deputy Superintendent Cohen with my colleague. We're here to present the proposal for a grant expansion, the CTE expansion grant through the Executive Office of Education and I might need your help. In, thank you, in partnership with the MSBA. So this is, we're just sharing with you what we're exploring at this time. So this is really just the elements of the RFP. So this is an opportunity for funding to develop appropriate learning spaces for chapter seventy-four CTE pathways. In LVTI, we're also exploring Ling Classical and Ling English. The district is eligible for up to five million dollars to renovate spaces. Funds will be administered, as I said, through the Executive Office of Education in consultation with MSBA. So the purposes of this grant or the purposes for us applying are to build capacity. We want to be able to reduce the wait lists that we have at the tech by offering more programming. We have the opportunity for exploring other pathways in CTE. We'd like to provide equitable access to skills training for students who can pursue career pathways in their field of study. We are also looking at the blueprint and expanding, or rather, meeting the demand of employers and creating a growth strategy for ensuring students meet hiring needs for employees. So the goals of this grant are to increase hands-on instruction, providing facility expansion and modernization, increasing the number of students able to participate in existing programs, creating a new program to meet demonstrated demand based on the labor market, increasing enrollment capacity, availability and utilization of equipment, as well as improving the skills of students due to replacing capital equipment.
In terms of eligibility, schools with eligible chapter seventy-four programs identified by the Workforce Skills Cabinet Regional Blueprint. LVTI is of course eligible. LCHS and LEHS are eligible in addition because we have placed letters of intent, placing them in the DESI approval process for chapter seventy-four CTE programs. Preference may be given to schools that have not received facility expansion or lab modernization grants in the past. The grant parameters and project duration are planning and design to develop new programs, increase schools' gross square footage available for technical instruction, and the duration is December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. The selected programs that we're exploring are environmental science and technology at LVTI, public safety at LVTI with a criminal justice focus, business technology at LCHS and business technology at LEHS. They will both have sort of their own focus within those areas. And since business technology is new, we just want to explain a little bit about it. It creates an educational pathway for students with local business connections to and global business potential. The pathway will explore business and marketing, structure and ethics, branding and marketing methods, and develop the digital skills students need from maximizing Microsoft three sixty-five tools that we have to AI, cloud computing and digital analysis. And this is just a run-through of what we have already done. So our first steps, we're meeting with principals of LCHS and LEHS to discuss potential chapter seventy-four CTE areas. We've had more than one meeting with the principal of LVTI to discuss overall chapter seventy-four vision for the district. We've taken a walkthrough of LVTI with Principal Gallo, Deputy Cohen, myself and members of ISD. Our next steps will be more walkthroughs with ISD, creation of estimates of necessary construction and equipment in partnership with principals in ISD, collaborate on grant writing and final submission. Our draft deadline is October twenty-four, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, and our final submission is October thirtieth. Questions?
Has there been teacher input on these? You've done the walkthroughs, so I just want to make sure that teachers are able to voice.
So the, the business technology pathway, we did some previous surveying when we were writing the magnet grant and that came out on top in terms of the interest in schools. We also have the business pathway for early college and we have had a waitlist every year on the business pathway. It's our most popular pathway. So we feel like this would be a good, we have indicators that this would be a good choice to start out with. Should we choose to go forward with that with the schools?
Really, I hear a lot that things are like pushed down people's throats and they don't know about it. So I would really like to survey teachers to make sure that they understand what this consists of. Like, that's the most important thing. I think once they understand it, they'd be on board with this and it will go smoothly as it did at Frederick Douglass. So I just think they need that input.
Member Reed.
Thank you for the presentation. This is something that's exciting, something we've talked about for a while. I'm just curious, because I know we've had discussions about this, I guess, at least on an individual basis. If we were thinking about English or classical, do we have any idea what that would look like? Or are we still just in the early, early sort of conceptual stages?
We're still in the early stages. However, we are thinking about the footprint. So the pathway that we're considering does not take up a large footprint physically. So we're, this is talking about renovating spaces that already exist in the schools.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you for the presentation. I like this idea. Business technology. Have we explored, have there, I mean, I know we offer some to, something, some things at tech, you know, with plumbing and electricity. Have we, have we visited or tried to explore if there's any grants to expand those programs? Like to be available at classical and English, maybe some plumbing, electrical, maybe partner with some of the unions that like the competitors' union, the plumbers' union. Have we explored, are there any grants to bring shops like that to, to make them available for kids, students at classical and English? I mean, business technology is great, but does it bear high demand for, for, you know, the workforce where kids can be effective immediately?
I will just answer the question that, that due to the, due to the amount of space that we have available, which is very, very limited at those two high schools, we haven't looked into that yet. That is a potential for the future, definitely. And I hear that that is, I mean, that is, that, those are great shops that are needed. The shops of that nature require a large space with a certain amount of square footage and a related space. And we just don't have that for the comprehensive high schools at this time.
First of all, I want to thank you for identifying this grant and this opportunity. I remember eight years ago when we really weren't as competitive and as really robust as we are today in your grant hunting, because to identify this opportunity, it's a big deal. And to, 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 I guess, to the application portion of it. I guess, what, I'm sorry, there's a screech. What is the criteria? Can you kind of talk about like what that looks like? Because it says up to, I think the only, I think it said, the district is eligible for up to five million dollars to renovate spaces. But can you kind of break down the criteria? I don't know, like could you just break that down on what that looks like?
We are, we are limited to only three areas for this, for this grant. So that's why you see environmental science, criminal justice and business technology are three. The bulk of the, the bulk of the funding that would come from this grant is for construction and renovation. We're really not looking at expanding square footage. We're not like looking to build on to the buildings. So we will probably not come to the level of requesting that amount of money of five million dollars because we, we won't need it for what we're planning, if that helps make anything clear, more clear.
It does. Would, I guess, when I think about like a new program, I think about staff. I think about the added curriculum, like cost-wise, like what, what is covered in this grant?
It does allow, it does allow for startup costs for staff.
Thank you so much. We're very excited about this opportunity. Appreciate it. Next, we have a request to accept a donation from the Gene Haas Foundation of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the LVTI Scholarship Fund for Machine Shop Students. It's a recommendation of Superintendent.
The recommendation is to accept the donation from the Gene Haas Foundation of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for LVTI Scholarship Fund for Machine Shop Students.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? I have it. Next item is district's improvement goals.
Table this.
Second.
There's a motion to table, seconded, undebatable. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetly?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next here, we have item for executive session. If someone could make that motion and read the. If some could make that motion and read the item.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pursuant to MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Is there a motion to enter regular session?
Make a motion to enter regular session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, so in executive session, there is a vote to approve a general release settlement agreement, confidentiality agreement between Dr. Ivana Alvarez and Lynn Public Schools. Is there a motion to approve in regular session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
The committee also unanimously agreed on this public statement after discussions between the school committee and superintendent. The parties have mutually agreed to move in new directions. The superintendent has advised that she is resigning her position effective October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the committee has accepted the superintendent's resignation. Dr. Alvarez joined the Lynn Public Schools as superintendent in two thousand twenty-three. During her tenure, she set a clear strategic course for school improvement, leading measurable progress across the district. When she began, fourteen schools were in the lowest, state's lowest ten percent. Through her focused instructional leadership, that number dropped to eleven in two thousand twenty-four, and then to eight in two thousand twenty-five. Graduation rates increased by eight percent in just one year, reflecting the district's strengthened focus on academic rigor, student support, and post-secondary readiness. Expanded access for those furthest from opportunity has been a hallmark of Dr. Alvarez's leadership, with nearly doubled the number of pre-kindergarten seats available to families, expanded practice SAT participation, and greater access to advanced placement and early college opportunities that open doors to higher education to students further from opportunity in Lynn. Dr. Alvarez's vision for innovative program design also resulted in the opening of the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy at one ninety-five Market Street, and the expansion of seats at the Early Childhood Center on Bennett Street, serving nearly three hundred pre-kindergarten students in the City Arts and Sciences Academy, which now educates three hundred middle and high school students. Dr. Alvarez has enjoyed collaborating with dedicated and talented educators, staff members, administrators. Her partnership with families and her commitment to putting children in our community first have helped to create a safe and supportive learning environment that fosters academic and personal growth. Although there is still work to be done in Lynn, Dr. Alvarez leaves a solid foundation of measurable improvement, strategic coherence, and innovation, and is now ready to embrace new challenges where her leadership can make a broader impact. As Dr. Alvarez looks forward to a new career opportunity, the school committee wishes her well in her future endeavors. The committee will be updating the school community in the near future about successor leadership. In making those decisions, our priority will continue to be the best interests of our students and faculty and minimal disruption to the community. We will be calling a special meeting next Thursday, October sixteenth, to address the successor. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.